Welcome, everyone, to our meeting of April 5th, 2023. I'd like to call the meeting to order and start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Warrants have been signed.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second up.
All in favor? Okay. Minutes, do we have them yet? Or is the table was late?
Yeah. So we'll have to do those next week.
Okay, we'll have to hold off on the minutes. Town administrators' weekly update.
Okay. First is to let you know that I heard from O'Donnell's and Associates regarding the revow, and they are requesting a workshop with the full board to kind of go over their findings and discuss different numbers and options with you in regards to the percentage that you want to be at, as far as 100%.
I see.
They do, are requesting that all three of you be there. So we've tentatively scheduled it for Wednesday, April 26th, at 3:00. I picked a day that-
April 26th?
Yes, at 3:00.
This is for the revow?
Revow discussions. Because they are just about to the point where, once they go over with you, they want to present the basis of how they came to the numbers. You're not going to get individual assessments that day.
Just overall?
Just overall, right. Then they'll-
Assess value and what that might mean for tax rate.
Exactly. So they will, then from there, we can start thinking about sending letters out, inviting the letters to all the property owners, letting them know what their old valuation is, what their new one is. Set up hearings for the residents to have a chance to come in one-on-one and meet with an assessor. So we do all that, so we need to start working on it.
Those would be with the assessor, we're not involved in that.
Yes, be here at the town hall with the assessor. But we need time to get all that done before we commit taxes. It's going to happen quickly.
Can you ask them to provide information before that meeting?
Sure. Review it, absolutely.
It's probably going to be complex, I'd like to read it beforehand.
Sure.
I assume we all would. So, okay?
Okay. Yep. Next is to discuss with you the town hall hours and the positions that we have open. I've talked to you guys kind of individually on this. As we know, we have our deputy town clerk, who's been promoted to a Shapley position, and for medical reasons, our office assistant, who is just no longer working here. So within, you know, weeks, we're going to have two open positions in my office. That is going to be a struggle to, you know, maintain. So the quicker that we can advertise a position while the deputy clerk is still here, we can do some training, she can help do some of the training. David can attest, when we hired downstairs, a land use, although we got many applications, the biggest thing that we heard was the hours. It takes Town of Acton employees six days to get 40 hours. Out of all of the counties, in York County, more than half of them are going to four-day work weeks. There's only three that actually have Saturday hours. You've got cities like Sanford and Bitterford, Alfred, that are doing four-day work weeks. And that seems to be more inviting to people that who want to work. So in your schedule, in your packet, I had met with all-
Jennifer, is there a packet? I got the agenda.
Did you put it down?
I may have. That's fine, you go ahead, I've seen it, but-
You can have my packet.
No, 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 it's okay.
We'll share with the dog.
Yeah, we can share.
I can go get it.
I've seen the schedule.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure I have it.
All right, I'm sorry. So currently, the Town of Acton, if we average Saturdays on one hour a week, and I'm averaging on one hour a week because we're only open two Saturdays a month for three hours, so averaging it out, currently, we're open to the public 26 hours a week, okay? The proposal that I'm going to present to you is opening the hours 31 hours a week. So we're actually going to increase by five hours to the public. This doesn't affect our budget in any way, because most, all of the staff here already works 40 hours. So we're just opening more hours that were already here. So we're going to be increasing from 26 to 31. What we're proposing is a Tuesday through Friday work schedule, okay? You may be thinking, you know, you're already closed Mondays, we're not, we all work Mondays. But the idea is that we will officially be closed on Mondays. So staff will work Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, nine-hour days, and it'll be 36 hours. So for those that are grandfathered in 40-hour weeks, the extra four hours will come from either a planning board meeting twice a month, and it'll work itself out through the month, board of selectmen meetings. If you remember, two office assistants ago, we had, that position actually tended these meetings to help pick up some of the administrative work. So they'll get the same 40 hours they're getting now. So we would be open Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Right now, we're open 9 to 4. We're going to extend that from 8:30 to 4:30. Staff will actually work 9 to 5, so that gives us a half hour to get here, get everything open, the windows open, and give you time to close down. Thursdays, we currently work 3 to 7. Staff will work 10 to 7. The office will be open from 12 to 7. So we'll be closed Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. The only difference that the residents are going to see is Saturday. We're still being open Thursday night, but for staff, and hopefully make it more inviting, because let's face it, we need to start, you know, we've got to fill these positions soon. The position will be Tuesday through Friday. So we're hoping that that will, you know, help bring in a different group, or at least more employees. I mean, we had downstairs open for months, months, before we got applicants.
I understand.
So that's my proposal. We would like to start at May 1st, give the residents a month's notice, so we would ask that you look that over, and maybe we can discuss it next week, or hear public comment.
Any thoughts now?
I've been discussing this with Jen there for a couple of weeks now, I would say. And when we were doing our interviews downstairs, when you're telling them what their schedule would be, it was so erratic, you know, what, you know, three, four hours this day? Nobody wants to go into work for four hours, you know?
I can't hear with the-
What's that?
There's an echo when they talk in the audience, I'm sorry. Maybe I turned this? Nothing, go ahead. No, that, when they, when they talk in the audience, they don't realize there's an echo in the-
Oh, okay, yeah.
So I'm trying to listen to you, but somehow it's picking up on the mic.
So by doing a more structured, you know, four-day, like everybody else is going to, you know, people rather work a four-day week than a five, have a three-day week.
Or six, right.
Whatever. So I think this is going to help bring in some more, you know, people from the public.
Okay. I think we'll hold for, will that schedule be sort of posted as a proposal?
We certainly can.
Let's post it as a proposal, and we can have public comment next week before we make a decision on this, okay? So everyone can think about it, and we'll talk about it next week.
Okay. All right, so that is that. Next is just to let you know that I have scheduled with the road commissioner, which I haven't had a chance to go over the date with Will yet, but I have a tentative date with Will, David, and the property owners, the two property owners on West Shore Drive in the upcoming week to talk about the temporary roads, so we're handling that.
Good.
And I did speak to both the property owners, they were actually here for different reasons, one via email, one here. And just so the public knows, I mean, the full board will be reviewing the legal contract, we're just trying to narrow it down and get some ideas.
Great. Thank you for doing that, David.
No problem.
The, next is, just to let you know that our plumber, Kittredge, has completed the work outside for the water filtration system. He was here at the beginning of the week, so he did all of that. And I contacted H2O today, we're going to get scheduled, looks like, within the next two weeks.
Beautiful.
That's great.
Next in your packet is the York County Sheriff's Department log. The first page that you have is just the dispatch, which you can take home and read, the notable events that we normally go over. So the first, on the 6th of March, they had a break-in on Emory Mills Road of some storage units. Next is on Shapley, an individual was arrested for violation of protection of order. On the 10th, there was an unattended death of a 50-year-old man in Shapley. On the 13th, again, in Shapley, there was a domestic dispute regarding a couple of individuals. On the 16th, Deputy Carr was dispatched to a disturbance in Acton, and they did summons a couple of Acton residents for that. On the 16th, also in Shapley, a five-year-old child disclosed that the father had been choking him or her, so CID is investigating that. On the 25th, there was a burglary in place on the business here on H Road, which they have handled. On the 27th, it looks like there was a break-in, oh no, I'm sorry, 27th, there was an unattended death, another unattended death in Shapley. I should note that both of those unattended deaths were tied to medical, medical history. And then the 28th, also in Shapley, violation of conditions of resident over there. So they're busy. And last is kind of for, David and I will split, kind of split this up some, because I know that RSMS is going to come up later on in the agenda, but we did meet with an individual from the engineering firm, not to get into too much detail, we essentially gave him two projects. Get us an engineering cost for the transfer station work, and he met with Robin, and we'll get an update as time goes on, and get us a price to possibly engineer the, give us an opinion of all the roads in Acton, a road assessment. He knows that we're looking for those engineering numbers for this year's warrant, and then from there, we'll talk about getting them started on the rec, which is the first project, but they've already got the money. And once you guys decide about the facility assessment, we'll talk more about the parking lot, right?
And one thing we did discuss, because we were talking about the parking lot here until we go through the facility assessment there, what we're going to do with the building down here. But one thing that I did discuss with them was possibly having them survey, do a survey of the property here.
Mm-hmm.
To prep for the engineering, you know, kind of get a head start on it, because we're going to have issues with the church parking lot and our parking lot here and all that, so he thought that was a pretty good idea.
Okay. Great.
All have.
That's all you have?
Yeah.
Thank you. Department head committee chair updates. Robin, I think you're scheduled to-
I have drew up some ideas that I'm thinking about and want your approval. First thing, the month of May is the tire month for everybody, eight tires per household, no rims. The rims will have to be taken off the tires and put in the metal thing, because we make money on the metal, and we'd cost us money to put tonnage in the tires. So there'll be no rims on tires.
So what happens if they come in with?
Well, this year, well, this year, I'll work with them and just tell them next year it'll be no, because this is all kind of spur-of-the-moment thing.
So this year, you do the rims?
So when?
I'm going to, I'm hoping to take this effect on January 2024.
Okay.
So this year, I'm going to have to accept whatever, because I want the summer people to realize that's the same thing. There's some other things-
Thank you.
-related to summer people, that I want everybody to have a year's worth of knowledge before they actually, I actually enforce it. So this year, we'll probably, I'll probably accept the tires with rims on them, but next year, it won't be. The next thing-
I got a silly question.
Yep.
When you get a tire with a rim on it, are you taking the rim off?
No.
So what do you do?
They, I ship them right with the tires, and they, that goes in the tonnage for tires.
So we pay tonnage on the tires?
Correct, tire and rims, correct.
So that would save us some.
So do you, you know, it's up to you people if you want me to set them aside and take them somewheres and have them demounted, or what? It's totally up to you guys.
No, I mean, no, no.
We don't get that many, but we do get, I probably got, last year, when I first took over, I probably got a dozen with rims on. So it's really not a whole much, but it's all the weight, you know, I'm trying to save the town some money, and the weight added up in them tonnage for tires that we're paying, and we can get money for the rims.
What do you think it's costing us extra for the?
I have no idea.
Couple hundred bucks.
Yeah, probably, probably, probably-
The rims probably weigh, what, 50 pounds apiece? And if you've got a dozen of them, it's-
20 pounds, yeah.
It's 600 pounds.
Probably 600 bucks or so, you know, but I'm trying to save everything we can.
All right, I think it's fair to give them a notice, it sounds, I think what you're doing is reasonable and fair to the public-
Yep.
-by giving them notice, so.
Okay. The next thing, on the demo part of it, is, you know, in 2024, I'm not going to accept anything over four feet long. You know, we've been getting boards in there, 10, 12, and pieces of plywood that takes up a lot of airspace in our containers. So I can move a four-foot piece of plywood around from the top side with a hook and stuff and stand it up on the side, and the boards, it just takes up too much space, and we're losing too much airspace in them containers. So that's another thing that I'm kind of looking on. And also, we get a lot of lawn mowers and stuff that comes in to the transfer station that has gasoline in it. In 2024, I'm hoping to have your approval to have all the gas taken out of the mowers and stuff that comes in. Now, we just, what has been doing in the past, we've been just taking the covers off and letting, you know, evaporate. I don't think that's a good idea for the town to have gasoline, because when we go to put it, if they're not all evaporated, and I need the space, and we put it in the metal thing, it couldn't make a spark, and we'd have more of a problem than what we do. So that's another thing that I'm looking to have your approval for. Also, all the renters that come to the town, to the transfer station, should have a renter's agreement with them, so we can say, okay, you're renting this property, you have a renter's agreement, we have the thing with, and we can issue them, you know, if they're going to be here for a couple of weeks, we can issue them a permit for that vehicle, then that would be-
Yeah, well, I've got a question on that. So we, because they charge, we charge for rentals.
Okay.
So if you, if you rent out your property, you know, Airbnb, and you rent it out, you guys don't hand out the hangers at the transfer station? I thought only we do, because we charge for them.
Okay, all right, so-
Rent, you know what I mean? So renters-
Just have to have them with them, that's all.
Well, right, they'll have a hanger in their car, so if you, if Tom rents out his house, he's going to get one for number five, West Shore Drive, and then his different tenants can-
If I tell you I'm renting-
Right, well, you're not going to get a transfer station from me or Robin if you don't have proof that you live there, proof that you own the property.
Okay.
Right, and I've been really a sticker on permits lately.
We won't issue them without a renter. I mean, I appreciate that, but I don't think it's something you-
Okay, nothing, okay. Disregard that then.
Just try to save you.
You're just looking for the sticker or the tag?
Right, sticker or the tag, correct.
If they don't have a, if they're not in your book, you don't give them the sticker.
Okay. All right. The next thing, just to let the public know, all refrigerators and freezers, the doors have to be off them when they come into the facilities.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
It's, you know, I've been doing it, you know, it's been on a case-by-case basis, but I just want to make sure everybody in town realizes that before they can bring them, it has to be taken off.
Is that to make sure they're empty?
Should be taken off, correct.
Nothing's inside of them.
Yeah, you know, nowadays, you know, it ain't like it back years ago, when you had, you couldn't open the door from the inside, you know, worried about kids and that sort of stuff, and I'm still worried about that up there, you know? We get all refrigerators in, so as soon as they come in, and they haven't taken them off, I have spoken to them, you know, you're supposed to take them off. If they haven't, I'm not telling them, oh, you got to take it back. I go up and do it, but I make sure they realize that next time, it has to be taken off. The last and foremost is, you know, just to let the public know that to help out on the taxes, we take Maine and New Hampshire soda beer and wine bottles in there, and it, you know, collect them all up, it helps out on the taxes, and we also, it's saving copper, brass, aluminum, and electric motors. To, you know, we all, we take that into the salvage yard, and the town gets money for that. So just give them a notice of that, you know, start saving that stuff out, we can make money on helping out with taxes.
Do you think, Robin, there's anything on here that, I mean, I appreciate you starting this in April, but why not give them two or three months' notice? I mean, if we do the flyers, I mean, it's going to get stale, you know what I mean? If we get the flyers, we start passing them out, why not? I mean, these aren't major changes. You consider maybe having them go into effect, you know, Memorial Day, or Labor Day weekend, or 4th of July? Do you think any of this is really going to, because the doors are already not allowed?
The only thing is the demo for the summer people.
Well, right, which one?
Basically, just that one, one thing that-
Four foot or the doors?
Huh?
Which, what's going to upset them, the four foot or the-
Yeah, the four foot.
Over, you get that much upset from four feet?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So I treat people the way I want to be treated, and I just soon let it go a year. We pass out the flyers, and-
It'd be like six months, right?
I don't know, I could have, do it now.
I'd just do it.
It's up to you guys, you guys are the boss.
Or at least a couple months.
I appreciate you trying, you know what you're trying to do, but it seems, if you give people enough, I was curious, do we, it seems we ought to have a sign made up.
Yeah. Transfer station- I didn't make any-
It has all the current rules, so people know what they are.
Yeah.
I'm not sure I know them all, I think I do. And the ones that are going into effect on some date.
Right.
And it ought to be a fairly, you know, nice sign, don't, you know, not handwritten.
Right.
Let's get a, you know-
Yeah, I can, I can-
And let's post it in a place where people will see it, probably on that, on that section where they come into the hopper.
Right, where I have the dump sticker sign up now.
I'm just afraid if we hand them out all summer, I'm sorry, I'm afraid if we hand them out all summer, they're not going to remember, come, you know, by the time they go home for the winter and come back, I mean, I think a 60 days notice or so, I feel like is reasonable.
Okay, that's up to you.
I was figuring, um-
I was thinking for the July, it's in the middle.
Yeah.
Okay.
July 1st.
July 1st. We change everything over on July 1st anyways?
Yeah.
Budgets, everything else?
I mean, we'll do, you know, we'll help you with, we'll put it in the newspaper, we'll, you know, we can put it on Facebook, we can put it on the town's website, we're going to see lots of people, it's tax time, so the quicker we can get this typed up-
Right, yeah.
You know, we'll help you with that.
Could we send them out in the tax thing?
Thank you.
Oh, tax bills, tax bills only go out once a year, remember, in August?
Right.
Possibly I can put a blurb in, we'll talk, and we'll get closer to that.
Put a sign up at the transfer station, and I think that'll be plenty of-
And we can even put something up there, you know, transfer station rules effective July 1, check with the superintendent, you know, we can-
Put it online.
On the website, yep.
Yep.
I'm just afraid, they're great ideas, and if you go too long, the idea will get stale. We'll hand them all out, and that'll end up being people's trash.
Sounds good to me.
Thanks for taking the initiative on this, bunch of good ideas.
Have a great day.
Thank you. Any other department head committee chair comments? Okay. Liaison updates. Met with the transfer station today, went over some billing and accounting issues. That's pretty much it for me. Kim?
I've got a list. I guess we'll start with, we'll start with the recreational committee. I know that they've extended their baseball signups, looking for more children, hopefully.
Wasn't there a particular, was it fifth and sixth grade, they didn't have enough to make a change?
Yeah, there was, yep, just certain ages, it's, she did put it up on What's Up in Acton in her website, but, so that's extended. She also just signed up with the Maine Recreational and Park Association, MRPA, and I guess they offer training, information, connections, like in our surrounding towns and stuff, to, you know, just kind of joining with other rec teams and stuff like that. There's also grant possibilities, discounted tickets through them, they have promotions and stuff, so she joined that, and I think that's a good idea. Let's see here, oh, they're doing a coupon, a family and friends coupon, 20% off of your total in-store purchase at Dick's.
Who's doing a coupon? The rec?
The rec is, you know, for any rec families, so.
Is this something you buy from them, or?
It's just coupons that Dick gives out to-
And so any Acton resident?
Rec, rec.
Only the rec committee members?
Yes.
So they buy it for their own personal use?
They don't buy it, it's just, it's a 20% coupon.
Other towns do the same thing, Dick's does it for all the recs.
They just give them a discount if they want to buy stuff for the town?
Yeah, you say, I'm, you know, I'm, yeah.
For town purchases, that's it.
Um, let's see here, and that's about, I guess, it. I mean, obviously, we know we're going to hopefully soon hit the parking lot, and they're excited about that, they want to get that done as soon as possible, and I'm excited too. What do we have next? School, school, let's talk about that. They got their operating budgets out, hopefully everybody's got one, so they can kind of go over it. Tomorrow night, they're going to be having their public meeting at 6:00 PM, and hopefully we'll have people come out and, you know, join us. I'll be there, and I'm sure quite a few other people will be there. It's at the school, yeah.
This is to discuss the May 2nd vote, right?
Right, yep, and it's the, what is it, the 2023, 24 budget that, you know, they've put together, and they've done an unbelievable job. So it would be nice to have anybody come, listen to what they have to say, because they work really hard, they really do. Let's see here, I know cemetery met with, the cemetery committee met with warrant and finance. I heard through the grapevine, it was a good meeting, he did a good presentation. I think there's going to be a little bit of follow-up, but, you know, all in all, I think, I think it was good, so.
What do you mean, follow-up?
Questions, probably, you know?
I didn't know if I was supposed to say something, okay.
No, no, not us, no.
Just checking.
A-PAT, I haven't talked to A-PAT, but things are quiet there. There are a couple of things I do want to talk to him about, so actually, could you set a meeting up with us? I just had a couple of questions for him. So, so other than that, that's it, you know, come out to the school board, the public hearing tomorrow night, hope to see you all there.
Okay, I guess I'm up next. I don't really have anything to update anybody on, I haven't had any meetings, no road committee meetings or anything. Remembered the road commissioners last week on their budget, that was kind of a group thing, so, yeah, I'm good.
Two things, David, I guess I'm just remembering to tell you, so Leslie did send an email out to the Article 43 road, letting him know it was incomplete, so we haven't heard anything on that.
Yep.
And Mary Grant did commit to food for town meeting, they're working out the details.
Nice.
And I was going to tell you, and I did speak to, just because we said town meeting, the superintendent about maybe, you know, finding a staff member that might want to be paid to do some babysitting, so we're working that out.
Could you go back to Article 43? I didn't quite follow what you were saying there.
So remember, a couple of weeks ago, we had an application for a road for Article 43 funds, the packet was incomplete.
Okay.
The ball's back in there for.
Very good. Okay. Under old business, Select Board Propose Zoning Article.
Okay, so per the last couple of weeks, we sent the draft over to Joe Lankowski of the thought that what the board was considering. He did review it, but he felt like there was a different way to maybe achieve what the board was looking for, so he made a, he wrote a letter, it really just talks about It really just talks about why he feels like it might be more important to go in a different direction, and talks about the boundaries between the board and the planning board. But the important part here is the last paragraph that I'll read you. In my opinion, the best approach would be to seek as an amendment to the ordinance, expanding the jurisdiction of the zoning board of appeals. Currently, the ZBA can hear appeals from decisions of the C.E.O., but not from planning board decisions. If the ZBA's jurisdiction was expanded to include appeals from the planning board, this would give applicants who felt they had been unfairly treated by the planning board, a much faster and cheaper alternative remedy than to appear, appeal to Superior Court, which is currently their only recourse. So, um, that's his thought. I mentioned to David, planning board does have a meeting tomorrow night, but you guys need to talk about timeframe, how you want this handled, what direction you want to go in.
Well, I mean, I think it's, I think it's a step forward compared to what we, what you were proposing before. You know, we were, we're kind of like, we weren't sure whether or not that was the way to go or not. I don't believe the planning board was on board.
Yeah.
Um, I can understand some of the, the concern, but this here, I think, what it does, it makes it so that you don't have to go right to Superior Court. And that's what it's, that's costing people money.
Definitely easier.
And, you know, and we don't have a lot of complaints, but, um, you know, with the, with the pits and stuff, all the stuff that's been going on, a lot of, there's been a lot of thinking going on and trying to plan ahead. And I, I think this is something that, you know, we could go forward with. I just don't know if we can do it this year. You know, I think, because I think we really got to go to the planning board and let them soak it up a little bit, and I don't know. I'm just not sure if we got the time to do it. But this is, I, I think this is a doable thing, because I haven't talked to the planning board about it either, so.
When would it have to be determined that we want to move forward, in order to make that main, uh, June meeting?
I mean, am I honest?
Last week.
Okay. So you could pull it off timelines. You could. You, you still have a couple of weeks, and we, I mean, it's your warrant, you certainly could. However, as your administrator, I'm going to remind you that we put a very strict schedule in place, and some of, some of these boards and committees already make comments that what you're going to hear, Tom, in all honesty, is that if we don't follow our own timeline, they're not, you know, I mean, why should they have to?
Right.
And at some, at some meetings, and at one planning board meeting, there was discussion about why they had to have all their ordinances in by the middle of February. I'm just trying to be honest with you.
No, I, I just wanted to ask the question.
You've answered it, thank you.
You could do it, but.
I think, honestly, this is a good idea.
And I think they'll support it.
I think they'll support it, but I don't want to cram it down their throat either.
Yeah, it would be better to talk with them, let them to look into it.
We'll, we'll put it in front of them, let them chew on it.
Well, and why don't we tell them that we're considering putting it on our special town meeting with the West Shore Drive money in June?
We could do that also.
There we go.
That's great. At some point, I think Joe would have to be asked to draft the changes to the ordinance somehow, to insert this provision. And, but having a discussion with them first would try to doing that, I think makes a lot of sense, so, great.
I'm sure Joe's probably between all the other, you know, everything else in the ordinance, to make sure it doesn't contradict anything in the ordinance. We have to make any changes there. Give us a little time to do that.
Oh, it's a great outcome.
Moving forward.
Thank you for checking with him on this. Okay. Anything else on that? Okay. West Shore culvert project.
Okay, as promised, as promised, we are ready to go. On Monday, it will be out to bid to the public, everything put together, and it'll be on the town's website by Monday. But the last thing that we worked on was the notice of contractors. I'm not going to read it all to you, but just give you some dates. So the open bid date will be April tenth, Monday. There'll be a mandatory onsite meeting on Wednesday, April twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth. We will, Rancin' will accept any questions from that meeting through noon time on Wednesday, May tenth. She has to get back to everybody by Friday, the nineteenth. Deadline to bid is going to be Wednesday, May thirty-first. So this is all laid out, and all the legal jumble, all the specs, the plans, everything will be out there. Essentially, the bids will come to us. All of the questions, anybody interested in the project provides an email address to the engineer. They maintain the list, they send addendums, they handle it. You can either download the packet yourself, or you can buy purchases through the engineering firm. But ideally, based on their recommendation and confirming, we're looking for the work to be done right after Labor Day, to be completed no later than October fifteenth.
We, we didn't want to disturb the boat traffic. We didn't want to get our.
Yeah, inland fisheries.
Inland fisheries all in uproar, so we figured, start right after Labor Day, and I'm hoping two to three weeks, that project will be done, but we figured, uh, give it till the middle of October, just in case there's weather or some other reason.
So the idea, so if we have the bids in by the thirty-first, you know, by the first of June, really pushing hard to look at these, make some recommendations, and in schedule a special town meeting to appropriate the remainder of the funds, so we're ready to go.
Thank you, everyone.
Will we put this up on the website?
Monday.
Okay.
Yeah. Once, we'll copy everything they do.
Two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four special budget request. Jennifer?
So you have two documents. First, you have a nice staple packet of reading material, which is the budget as we believe it stands right now. This is just the proposed budget with the treasurer inputting everybody. No special projects, just that, so please take it home and proof it. The next page is list of special projects, and that may be the wrong word, but we're just maintaining a list, so we don't forget anything on the warrant. So this is what we have so far. We have, not to say these are all going on the warrant, this is just what the list we have. The District Two special project, Cemetery, remember, was looking for ten thousand for tree cutting, possibility of a shed in or playground for the rec, Fire Department's new phone system. We're hoping to have a number for engineering for the transfer station. Old gym repair is on there, just to talk about after the facility assessments. We don't forget about it. Town hall. I don't know what that means, Town Hall survey. I didn't write this, so. Oh, the survey, yeah, no, that's what, I'm sorry, that's what David, yeah, the survey of the property.
Oh, yeah, survey, okay, all right.
The road assessment, whether it's RSMs or whether it's the engineer, and then the school, they presented to you, and they have sent, sent me an email, an official request to re, refill that hundred thousand dollar capital improvement. If they do the roof, remember, and the freezer, that spends their capital reserves, so they are asking in June that you refill it with a hundred thousand of the town's.
When are we going to take action on that?
These are just reminders.
When do we have to have these resolved?
Well, assuming we have all of the budget done, we're ready to start writing the warrant.
Okay.
But I need to know which ones of these are going in it.
Fine.
And I think the warrant and finance is expecting to have that warrant. I'm going to pull up the handy dandy schedule, unless Dennis knows off the top of his head. Of May, April? I just wish to think it was today. No, 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 we cannot, but thank you, but, uh, yeah, they have three meetings, yeah, that's the first one, so we got to get going. Next week.
So the Town Hall survey, what?
That was your survey, the road, the survey property?
Survey the property?
Yes.
But we've already got the money for that, so.
Are you using that out of the parking lot?
Parking lot, so I don't, that's why I was confused.
Take that one off. So you'll draft up something, and we'll discuss them at a future meeting.
Yep, yep.
Wonderful.
Okay. I guess I'd more, you know, yes or no, if you want to move these things forward. I don't want to spend a lot of time coming up with figures if, you know.
Right.
The old gym repairs.
Well, we got to.
We still have to go over the, the thing, though, but I still think, I, I highly doubt we'll have time to really figure a number on that this year. So I think we can take that off for now, because I think it's going to. Because it's going to be, I think there's going to be a lot of considerations of what we're going to do.
Well, then let's just go through them. We, we're certain that we're moving the tree cutting from the cemetery.
Yep, District Two.
We're serving with the District Two. I know that you guys, the rec, the conversations, I think, kind of need to be had. You know, what David kind of mentioned this morning was, when we met with the engineer, that it's, go ahead.
We're talking about the highway.
Right.
Okay, so, of course, I've, I've said that, you know, the, the playground, everything's all, should be all one thing there, but when they do the engineer for the parking lot, okay, he's going to have to engineer and put proposed for playground, proposed for building, so we can get the max space out of this, so he's going to have to do it all at once.
Yeah.
Not necessarily actually designing the playground, but proposing an area for it.
Yeah.
So this is all something that he's supposed to be giving us a, uh, we've already got the money for that. That one, we've already got the money.
Right, so, well, I thought what we kind of talked about, so they have, what, forty thousand-ish?
Forty thousand, we're asking for another forty.
Oh, so what's the other forty, for the parking lot?
That's, so what we did, we're supposed to be adding the parking lot and the playground thing all at one, right? Wasn't that what we were going to do?
Well, that's what I'm saying. We have to make sure we pay the engineering first, and then get the parking lot done.
Parking lot done.
Right?
But when we.
We don't have to get the parking lot done. If we don't have the money, we don't have the money.
But before the playground, I mean.
Before the playground.
But you're saying the plans will have the playground in it, right, but, but we won't be doing it.
It'll have a proposed.
Right, okay, that makes sense.
You'll have a site map about.
Exactly.
Right, and then we can take it in pieces.
I asked them to plot it out, to make sure, when you put the parking lot in, you have a spot that you could put a potential playground and a potential building.
Right, no sense having him come back again.
So you're looking for, basically, what I understand is forty thousand dollars for the, for the rec property, and then you guys will decide as time goes on. We get the parking lot done, then see if we have enough for a shed, then see if we have enough to start the playground.
I think we're supposed to write it up, it was supposed to be parking lot slash playground.
Okay.
You do that, and it allows you to do multiple things with that, that number.
When the engineer does this, are they going to be giving us an estimate of what the parking lot will cost?
Yes.
What a shed might cost, and will we have that in time for this warrant?
I don't know about the shed, because we haven't, I couldn't, I couldn't tell them shed, because we didn't know what size, or I didn't have those, so all I asked them to do was.
Way to put it, right?
For the, for the parking lot, he's going to give us, he's going to engineer the parking lot. He's going to meet with the director and, and Kim. And that way there, they can go over where they want to put the playground, where they want to put the building.
What do you think, yeah.
What he'll do is design around those spots.
Will he give us, when will he give us a price for the lot?
I don't think you're going to have it in time for this warrant.
Probably not.
I, I guess that's.
I mean, by the time he meets with them, okay, I mean, we've, we've prioritized, and we, we need engineering numbers for the warrant, for, for the road assessment and for the transfer station, because we need to know, get the engineering money. That's the priority David gave him this morning. We're going to have him meet with Sam. She's unavailable for at least ten days, if not fourteen. So even if they meet in two weeks, and then go back and do the actual engineering, but the good news is that, I mean, she has the money for the engineering.
So even if he.
We just may not have to put all of the playground money or parking lot money in at once.
Yeah, you know, that's the problem we're going to have. We just got to get the engineering done first. It's slow enough, the process, but when we get the engineering done, we can get the RFPO for that, then we'll, you know, we, if we have the money, we have the money. If we don't, then we'll have to figure something out.
So that one, we'll, we'll figure out. The, we'll go back to the rec, I guess.
So does that get pulled?
I mean, you can put the money in there.
You got the money for the engineering.
You have enough for the engineering. It's up to you. Do you want to put some in there?
I, I, I still want to put money into that account. I mean, I don't like reserve accounts myself, but we already have one.
And maybe it'll happen, you know, he may be able to have something to us by the end of May, first of June. We still might be able to get some this year.
It would be great to do the parking lot.
Yeah.
That's the number one thing, first.
So if, by putting some money aside, we may have chances to do it.
So is it forty thousand?
Yeah, forty thousand.
I think it was forty.
Okay.
Fire Department phone, we have only gotten one quote yet, because one of the things we've found is that the quotes go stale before a town meeting comes and goes. We got a rough idea, based on a system that we've used for ten years.
And the numbers are fluctuating or something, okay.
You've only gotten one quote.
Yes.
At sixty-eight hundred dollars?
Yeah. We spent about thirteen here when we did the town hall.
If we were to do it, if we were to do a warrant for that, we should add a little something to that.
In case another bid comes in higher.
And, you know, I'll call it a contingency line.
Sure.
Say ten percent would be six hundred. It was seventy. I'd, I'd make it eight thousand dollars. You know, that's twenty percent for a contingency, and if we don't spend it, we don't spend it.
Right.
And we already got a bid from one, one person that is comparable to.
Any, we expect it anymore, do you think?
Well, we don't normally go out to bid until after it's been approved, because, you know, I mean, you're asking them to hold a bid for four months.
Yeah, you can't do that.
I mean, we got an idea just so that we could put something on the warrant, and you've got a policy we'll follow if it's approved.
We bought the current system from is the one we got the bid from, and, you know, there's going to be, I think, an interest in going with the same firm, because they've done a good job, compatible systems, but we ought to look to see if there's another provider out there. So I'm not bothered by him, them seeing Elijah Warren. We already got a number from this guy, so it will keep things under control.
Yep.
All right. So, uh, transfer station engineering, we know that's good, right? We'll get a number, hopefully, we told them in two weeks. Road assessment, we'll talk about a little later with RSMs, and the school capital reserve, do you want to talk about that now, or you want to wait until after we finish up the audit?
I, I think we'll wait until after the audit, and I'll talk about that in a moment.
Is there any other articles that you feel like we've missed, that somewhere you want to spend money or put money?
I don't want to put any money in the West Shore Drive.
Hold on a minute. Why don't you let us finish up our discussion, and then I'll open it up.
I'll take the money.
Cable Ray.
Too serious, Ray. Okay, is, is that it for you? I, I don't have anything else.
I don't have any.
I don't think there's anything else. I mean, Article forty-three is all set.
If we have time, we'll add it. If we can't, we can't. Okay.
We'll start working on the warrant.
Thank you. Facility assessment, Joyce?
I just was curious about the, sorry, Joyce, about the rec department, putting money aside for the playground or the shed. You don't know what size shed, but what size is the playground going to be? What, what is it going to be?
So we don't know any of those. Parking lot first.
Parking lot first, and then we'll start getting prices.
Yeah, so parking lot first.
Pieces cost, and then you add more, and then you, you know, whatever they can afford.
I think really what, what the engineer's going to do is when she, he meets with Sam.
Yep.
And yourself, you know, she's going to say, I want my playground over there, okay?
Can we do it? I mean, that would be the first.
You know, we're, we're not, we don't know what size it's going to be, but we have to have a rough idea of where she wants it, and what it's going to do to the parking lot. That'll all determine how big that playground's going to be.
And what do the townspeople want to spend on it?
And, and what are we going to spend on it?
Right, I mean, that's a decision that has to be.
So right now, I mean, we're, we're concentrating on the parking lot. That's all that we're concentrating on.
We just want to know, you know.
Parking lot first.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
Okay, fine. Moving on to the facility assessment, correct. We have a report from, what's the name of the firm?
T R C.
T R C, the binder.
Yes, and we're going to post that on the website. I've had a chance to look at it. I haven't studied it thoroughly, and I'm not sure the other selectmen have either. I, I think it had everything in there I would expect. They, I thought, had some great ideas, and will help shape our thinking and our discussion about what to do with this complex. So I, I think they seem to have touched all the bases. They have some great ideas about the fire station and the town hall complex, that I think has a lot of merit, so we'll post it, and hopefully, at a, perhaps the next meeting, or if time permits, we'll have a discussion about it, and people can read the report and come, and we'll see how to take this into next steps, okay? Warrant and finance questions. Were these in writing?
Yep, so I've got the email here. It should be, um, okay, so, um, three questions. The first one is, I'm not going to read it word for word, but essentially, details for the twenty thousand dollar increase for the summer budget. We did tell the road guys, I don't know how you want to handle this, but the first one.
Do you guys have a, a list of?
His own up budgets.
For the.
Well, can you, can someone come up and speak to it, please?
I'd say what the finance committee needs is a breakdown of roughly why you need the extra twenty thousand dollars. On my budget that we presented the other day, there is a breakdown on the back. I can get more in-depth if they want it. I know we have to meet with them again, so.
You do?
Don't you want to meet with us again, Dennis?
Uh, if we get these answers, I, that's the end of the question.
I don't believe that we had you scheduled in to meet.
Oh, I thought we had, I thought they wanted to, but.
So, if you can answer it now, you don't have to go back.
Yeah, no, I, on the, on the back of mine, there was, I think, five or six things I wanted to do extra this year that I need the money for. I had to replace some culverts on the man road. I had to do some ditching on there, the dandy road. I get a pile of tree work I had to do from the storm we had in, um, in about the Christmas time storm. I got tops that had broke off. I mean, I can.
Do you believe this list was provided to the warrant and finance committee?
Well, I, well, I remember when we.
Was it given to us, and maybe we didn't pass it off?
So we, they haven't, they haven't been anywhere since then, so they met with the warrant and finance in the beginning.
Oh, I see.
You guys went back and forth with your budget two or three times. It was just last week that we finalized it. I typed up that Excel spreadsheet. You guys looked it over. You approved it at last Wednesday meeting.
Yes, yes.
They've only met once, and they had nothing but social services on the agenda originally, so there was no, you know what I mean?
Can we now take that and share it with them, which will answer your question?
It'll answer the summer, right, so it's all, that part is all laid out, so.
All right. Do we have any other questions for them?
Yeah, um, so, okay, that is. So, building maintenance, so, um, why is the eleven thousand dollars for the roof on the tractor shed still in the beginning? If it's still going to be there, they're just looking for a detailed scope of work of how you're going to spend that money.
The eleven thousand dollars, we, we have some things we'd like to do down there. We'd like to be able to put power into that little building that's down there. With the eleven thousand, I believe we should be able to do that. We have some wet insulation in there that got wet when the roof leaked. That needs to be fixed. Adam wants to, uh, when you walk in the big sand shed, there's like pylons, and in the tractor, you want to wash all that out.
The door track needs to be painted, because we're at salt and sand, so it's against it.
Probably got to be sand blasted on the bottom.
We got, we have plenty to do. We can use that money for, so.
All right.
And just to clarify, it was back in two thousand nineteen, it was always budgeted about fifteen thousand, correct?
Fifteen thousand.
And it went up to twenty-one, so it actually only went up.
A little bit.
Six thousand.
Right.
We did spend eleven thousand for the roof, but there wasn't eleven.
Now it's back at eleven for this year?
Nope, it's, it stayed at twenty-one for the last several years.
Have, have you developed with that listing some estimated pricing to, to demonstrate that that twenty is the right number?
I'm not right now, but we can definitely, we definitely can. It probably wouldn't take much to, uh, to do it for the power and whatnot.
I know the power is going to be a few, it's going to be expensive.
Yeah, just the box and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, just add meter boxes over a thousand dollars now.
Will this be a budget that is earmarked specifically for this kind of work, and if you don't spend it, can it go elsewhere, or is it for this, and if you don't use it, it goes back to reserves? Okay, so the list. So if we don't spend it, it goes back, so hopefully, that answers the question, Dennis?
No.
Okay, what would you like to know, then?
It, it's just like with all the other budgets, Tom, uh, there's an explanation of how this dollar amount was arrived at.
Sure.
And what the warrant and finance committee wanted to know was the breakdown of how you come up with this.
I think what he just said, he doesn't have the detail.
Yeah.
He doesn't have a detailed cost estimate for all of these things.
He has a good estimate, though. He's got numbers beside most of his items.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Which, which one are we talking about?
We're talking about the, the building. You have the electrician, we, you estimated that at, you know, what, seventy thousand? I mean, there's a. I mean, there's a, they have a, they do have an estimate. And the board is going to take some responsibility in this because when we met with them, we didn't ask them about anything. The numbers stayed flatlined, so we didn't discuss it.
We didn't change it.
They didn't change it.
Three years from.
Let's put it another way. If you've got a list of projects, can, have you got estimates of that that you can share with the warrant and finance?
We can get that, we can get hard numbers for that and get it to.
And these were, these three questions here was the same three questions that we asked the night the rural commissioners were there.
Okay.
Then they said they're going to get us a detailed budget of the extra increases and
It sounds like they just haven't shared it with you, so we're going to get it to you, Dennis.
You'll have it before Monday's meeting, so we'll work together to get it to them.
We'll get these hard numbers and get them to take care of you.
Absolutely.
All right, any other questions for them?
So, yeah, the last question is regarding Flat Ground Road. So this is, let me just see. Okay, so. Okay, does this mean there's, okay. I know Jolenskowski said a year ago to do away with the dollar amount because it's no different than any other town road. We still have to regardless, we still have to maintain it regardless, but why is it still in the budget?
I watched the finance committee meeting the other night and there was a bit of confusion. Obviously, there was individuals on that, on the, what did I say? Finance committee, finance committee, sorry. The finance committee that obviously don't know the history behind this and how this has become, but the way that it was announced the other night, that this was, this is a road like H Road. I think that was the actual words that were used during the meeting. And there's a huge difference between the H Road and Flat Ground Road. H Road's a town road and Flat Ground is not a town road. Flat Ground is a road that has a contract agreement on maintenance. So, and limited maintenance at that. So, matter of fact, right here in the agreement that we, town voted to sign, town shall hereafter maintain the road by grading and repairing the surface of the traveled way and repair the drainage facilities as needed. Winter maintenance shall include snow plowing, okay? That's limited maintenance for that road. So for those on that committee that don't understand why this, this is being taken care of.
Excuse me? Excuse me, can we hold for a moment and then we will have an opportunity for comment?
Okay, so we've gone over this and over this before and what ended up happening back four years ago, four years ago, something like that, something like that, I think it was two thousand nineteen, four years ago, this came to town floor.
Yes.
As an agreement because the people of Flat Ground Road thought that their road was a town road, that there was an ease on that road even though the road had been discontinued in nineteen sixty due to the bridge coming from Wakefield across when that washed out, Acton decided to discontinue the road. At that point in time, there was one camp on that road, so Acton discontinued it. Then it was also discontinued again. I can't remember the date, two thousand something, that was done again when we got rid of, when we got rid of all the camp roads, okay? That was listed on there. Because back in the day, when that was discontinued, okay, somebody had moved on to that road and then somebody started maintaining it. It wasn't legit because it was never added back to town maintenance, but it was being done. So over time, and this is going to come up afterwards, over time, people assume it's a town road because town took care of it. We used to take care of a lot of roads that weren't even on the list because that's what was always done.
Can I, can I suggest something, David?
Yep.
I mean to interrupt you, but I understand there's a history with this and I'm beginning to get some of it. I think the important thing is, is there was a vote taken by the town that was represented and reflected in this material, this contract. And as you say, the contract that was approved by the townspeople indicated a limited scope of maintenance for the road, which indicates, and it was never accepted as a town road. It was an agreement to maintain this road in a limited way.
Yes.
So forget all the history, that's where we are today and.
I was trying to give the reason why we didn't accept it as a town road.
No, I mean, but, but it's not a town road.
But, but this is what's, this is the issue.
We have this document.
This is the issue I've got with it.
All you need to tell people is, you know, look at this, read it. This is a decision that was made.
It's all going to come to, and I know nobody wants to hear a long story, but this is going to come to, it's going to mean something when I'm done.
Go ahead.
So the problem we have is, is it got to the point where it was discontinued as a camp road, okay? Because it was on the camp road list. So it was discontinued. They come back to the town and they're like, you still own our easement, da, 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 this is a town road, da, 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 da. We're going to, lawsuit was threatened at one point. And so we had, when the lawyers looked at it, the lawyers, they couldn't prove in nineteen sixty that everybody on the road got a document saying that the road was being closed. So the lawyers thought, you know, because the road isn't paved and our road ordinance says it has to be paved, that we couldn't accept it because of that, but we could accept it on a contract, contractual basis for limited maintenance. So that's what we've done. And what we do is we put a number on that. We do that for a reason. First of all.
But can we change that as, as time goes?
What's that?
Change the number?
The number or the way we do it. We've gone into a contract, we are responsible to take care of this.
Exactly.
So, you know, there's inflation, things change. It's going to cost us more to take care of this.
What I would suggest is we, I, I still believe, I want to see the line Flat Ground Road for one reason. I don't want to see Flat Ground Road get pushed into the town road thing and next thing you know, in twenty years, everybody go, oh, it's a town road. No, it's not, okay? Either it's a town road or it isn't. Myself, we did a disservice when we didn't put it forward as a town road, okay? Because I think if the people in the town of Acton knew how much money's been spent on that road in a few years, okay, and their road isn't getting taken care of, there would be, some people are very upset.
This is what, you know, at the time, this is what our lawyers told us to do.
So we did that, okay? And so at this point, we're putting five thousand dollars a year, okay, for maintenance for that road. That's grading, plowing and some light ditching if need be, okay? There's no tree cutting, none of that's in this agreement, okay? This road is not a town road. It does not get taken care of like a town road. What was explained the other night was absolutely wrong. So, but what I would suggest to do, because Kim is right, we do have inflation. I believe right now there's fifteen hundred dollars still left in that account on my right? Okay, there's enough this year to grade the road.
Absolutely.
Okay, but what, can you come up here, Adam? I don't want to put you on the spot because I should have talked to you before. But, so what I'm suggesting to do is to, because of the snow plowing, not knowing the cost and having you guys having to go in there, keep track of every time you go in and out, it's almost impossible.
Correct.
Okay, I would be willing to put forward, having that go under, pull that out of the town snow plowing.
Okay.
Because we plow a lot of things around here that's not town roads that get pulled out of that anyways. That way there we don't have to worry about an overage.
Okay.
But what do you think, you've got fifteen hundred dollars right now, is there fifteen hundred dollars enough to grade and put a little gravel on that road this spring?
Yes.
And to maintain the ditches?
Right. What about the ditches and culverts and stuff yearly or every few years? You think that just fifteen hundred is going to do it every year?
No, well, no.
No, because we pull the snow plowing out.
Okay.
Then we'll have more money.
Well, what I'm suggesting is.
He's asking what you want the number to be.
Fifteen hundred is enough to grade it and put some gravel in the spring.
Yep.
Another fifteen hundred dollars to gravel and grade it in the fall. Three thousand dollars enough to grade and, grade and gravel that a year?
Yes, it should be.
Without any snow plowing?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you sure? Think about this for a minute.
As long as it depends on the prices, everything's gone up with gravel and everything, but.
Right, I mean, what would you feel comfortable with?
It's not a crazy amount of money.
Grading only takes a couple, three hours to grade.
Yeah, I mean, Jeff's real reasonable doing the grading up there.
But, I mean, so what I'm suggesting is we lower the number down to three thousand and then add the snow plowing into the regular snow plowing.
So if it goes over?
We don't have to worry about the inflation.
There's a majority of the expenses of plowing through the winter.
Exactly.
That's the majority.
Majority of it, yes.
But at the end of the day, oh, this is a good deal for Flat Ground Road at the end of the day. They get free maintenance, being a private road.
The other thing I would suggest is if the residents of Flat Ground Road want this to be a town road, then they, there's a process for doing that and they ought to go through that process. But everything that I've seen so far indicates to me it's not a town road, that it is a road that we've maintained according to a contract. That's different. That's my understanding. Anything else before we open it up? Because I'm sure we have one resident here that probably would want to ask about this.
I do know that when we were talking with the lawyer and stuff, I know David said nineteen sixty and then two thousand and five, I, I do know that, you know, one of the reasons we went this way was because we can prove that it was voted to not be a town road anymore, but the follow-up was not done, which is you need to register.
Or.
Or.
Notify everybody.
Or notify everybody.
They couldn't prove one way or the other.
So we couldn't prove one way or the other. That's how we got into this, you know? So one person could say it's a town road. It is. One person could say it's not. It's not because there's, so we don't need to fight about it anymore. I mean, we need to take care of it.
We've got so many roads that this has been an issue on over and over and over.
Right.
Okay, we get to this point where Flat Ground Road, if I was a selectman back at that point in time, I was road commissioner.
Yep.
I, I should have pushed to have it put forward as a town road.
Right, and I know we've talked about that before.
Because either it is or it isn't.
Right.
Now, we have one other issue, we got one other road in this town where there's an issue.
Okay.
But we've had lawyers look into it because of Coldwood Drive and Thirteenth. We plowed Thirteenth to get to Coldwood.
Yep.
Because of our interest on a town road, an actual town road.
Yep.
Which is a different circumstance.
We don't have time this year, but maybe we could get some feedback from the people on Flat Ground Road and come to us. And, you know, if for once and all we want.
Make them do what Seventh Street and everybody else had to do. They had to go and do it right. They got it put on a petition. They got it put up here just like anybody else.
Because, I mean, I have no problem supporting it.
And maybe the same people that didn't want to vote that road in, and I remember those people who got up there and said, we shouldn't take that road. Maybe they ought to do some same thing on that one.
Whether it's a town road or not, this is the only road that we have that has a separate agreement on it, is that right?
Yes.
So whether it's a town road or not, the voters have spoken as to how they want to maintain this road and it's reflected in this agreement. So that's all that we can do. We're bound by that contract, it seems to me. So, you know, whether it is or isn't a town road is a moot point. The voters have said, this is how we're going to maintain it. It's reflected in the contract. So would there, any other comment before we open it up?
No, I think, my biggest.
Anyone have a comment?
A couple of things. Just want to say warrant and finance is elected, there were elected officials of this town this year, except for three, four of us out of the seven have any history in town. One of our members has been here forever. One of our members has been here almost forever. I've been here twenty-four years. So I think it's, it's rather negative to make any kind of comment that people don't know anything when they're asking questions. I have one question.
Want to say that?
I have one question. And my question is, for clarification only, you say the road has been discontinued.
I'm not saying that.
No, is that the word?
It was.
The road was dis, how do you discontinue a private road?
It wasn't a private road. Originally wasn't a private road.
You did just say that.
Wait a minute. Let's deal with the facts that are on the table. Whether it was discontinued or not, a private road or a public road, all I know is we got a contract that was approved by the voters.
I agree with you.
This is how, this is what you, the town.
I'm going to answer this question, okay?
I think that we've fought enough about this. I mean, really, it's a back and forth.
It doesn't matter.
Right, and I agree with all.
This was a town road from Hopper to Wakefield back in the day.
Okay.
It was discontinued at that point, okay?
Okay, no, because I never knew, you answered my question, David, and I thank you for that.
I, I hope I didn't come off saying that you guys don't know what you're talking about. The individual that was given this information obviously doesn't.
Well, we're not going to, we're not going to go into that.
Let's not go there, please.
But we're not going to go into that, but I thank you for what you just said because personally, I never knew at any point it had been a town road.
Okay.
Okay, I never knew that. That's why I asked for clarification. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Joyce.
You're welcome.
Ray?
Good evening.
Good evening, too.
I guess in the sixteen years that I've lived in Acton, I guess I would have acquired some history, others, so there's actually more than four people there. I think we're getting away from the actual question. The question that we had on the warrant and finance committee is, since there's an agreement between the town and Flat Ground Road, why is it on the road commissioner's budget? Why is the five thousand dollars on the road commissioner's budget? That is the question.
It's separated on purpose because if you take, and you take that line out, then what happens is you're going to throw it into their regular maintenance budget, correct? You do that, you are paying town funds on a private road. There's nothing limiting at that point. How do you limit it? You limit it by the amount given, okay? And at the same time, it doesn't get lost in the, in the town road controversy, okay? It's listed as a separate entity for one reason, two reasons. Amount of money being spent, and that way there, it keeps itself separate from the other roads because it's a naughty town road.
In, in my limited time in this role, I have had a num- I've heard of a couple of questions where we've gone back and forth, we've engaged lawyers to go back and look at, what's the status of a, not necessarily this road, although we've done that with this one, with other roads. And it seems like after time, all of this gets forgotten. And if it's in the reg- I think David's point is, if it's in the regular maintenance budget, 10 years from now, everyone's going to think this is a town road. And, or it's, it's, it's eligible for the kind of maintenance that every other road in that budget gets. And for this road, for whatever reason, the, the taxpayers have chosen to establish a separate agreement with very specific maintenance requirements that's different than every other road. And what David is saying, look, you lump it in there, that's going to get lost. Personally, I don't think any of us care whether it's a town road or not. If we could get out, not have this agreement, and it got put in a town road, I don't care. I don't really care. But the people have specifically voted to treat it this way, and we're trying to honor that vote. It's that simple. And by co-mingling it five, 10 years from now, that's probably going to be lost. And we'll be back here talking about it, someone will, back here talking about it, and we're just trying to avoid that. We want to fulfill the obligations of that contract.
And the contract says we have to do it that way.
And we don't think whether it's in one account or two accounts really changes that. It's more memorializing what's going on with this road and what the townspeople have said we should be doing. That's all we're trying to do.
That was the lawyer, I think the lawyer at the time recommended doing that.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. That's, that's how we got there.
Yeah. So, but it leads me to a follow-up question. Um, Kim had stated something about inflation, and you asked the rural commissioner, was it going to be enough?
Yeah.
So it, whatever the agreement was, that's the way it's going to stay. And you guys just want it on there so that you know that sort of doesn't get lost.
And it's not just that we want-
And it's actually part of what they do.
It's part of what this, this says, that's what we have to do.
Yeah.
That, that's-
We'll email the Warrant Finance a copy of the agreement.
We can, we can send you a copy so that you can see what it-
You can see what they're allowed to say law.
Yeah, it's, it's different than a regular-
And, and I, I think David's suggestion about taking the snow plowing off of this budget, because you don't know what that number is because of the number of storms, and moving that into the plowing budget makes a great deal of sense.
Yes.
So now, all we're left with is, we need a budget to grade it and deal with the ditches or the drainage, whatever you call it.
Whatever it says, we can do it, yeah.
It's, it's a small item, and we just, you know, we can, we can budget that item fairly accurately based on input from the, the road agent.
In order to change that number, would that have to be going back to the public?
No.
No?
No, it's just going to be in the budget.
You just may have to just reword the article on how we're going to spend out the winter time.
Yeah.
That's all. But just at the end of the day, this, this comes up every year. I, I think that the Flat Ground Road gets a good deal for what, you know, they could, they could, it was a 50/50 chance. It could have gone to town meeting, it could have got voted in.
It's the deal that was agreed to.
Exactly.
The voters approved it, and so it is what it is. Any other comment? Okay. We have an email from Arnold Murray, and Jennifer, you want to carry it? By the way, we decided that whenever we get any correspondence from a resident asking about questions like this, and you'll hear about this in a moment, perfectly fine question, we're going to post that on the website so people can see them. And we won't do that, the only time we won't do it is if it's a personnel matter and we really don't want that out in the public, so we won't post those. But in the future, whenever we get correspondence where someone wants to know why we're doing something or whatever, we'll put it out there on the website. So with that, Jennifer?
So, um, and, and I don't mind summarizing it, but I mean, these are not his words. These are my words in an effort to shorten it up. So essentially, he is following up from the March 22nd meeting where we talked about RSMS. And he's asking about the data that we sent to Dawn and if Dawn was able to send anything back, and we can forward that, him that information. But it seems like the bigger concern is that at that same meeting, we talked about maybe bringing in Sebago Techs. And what he's asking is, he doesn't see how it adds any value for taxpayers to get an engineer involved if you already have the program. He did say that there's hundreds of communities that only use RSMS, that one municipality after an RSMS survey committed another $23 million for road repair. Really, his question is, please explain how it's more beneficial to the taxpayer to pay the higher cost for a pavement and shoulder assessment from an engineering firm than from main local roads and just using RSMS.
Do you want me to take this, or you want to do?
Go ahead.
Okay. The point's a good one. We talked about having an individual, Dawn, what's his last name, Jennifer?
R.A.M. Dawn McCollum.
The, the individual that actually created the software that we've acquired and are putting data into, he at one point was a state employee. I've spoken with him, it's been about six months. He's an engineer, and he wrote this software program. And it's one we bought, and we've talked about many times here. He indicated to me that he has actually done this work of doing road assessments. He used to do it for the state. This is the representation he made to me. So he's not just somebody who wrote a program, but he also has a background in roads and had done this at the state level. We have an engineering firm that we've developed a relationship with. David had spoken to him, said, "Do you do road assessments?" They said, "Yeah." So what we'd like to do is, and they've been asked to develop a proposal, and David's going to speak to this individual who, Dawn something, I'm sorry, I don't have his last name.
Last week.
Yeah, Dawn something, and give him the same information that we gave Sebago. And ask him for a proposal from him, based on his approach, what would he do? We don't want to specify this. He knows what we want to do. But we're going to, David will say, "We're looking for this, 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 and this," which is what they told Sebago. So we will have two proposals, one from Sebago and one from this individual. And we'll decide at that point what to do. So thank you, Mr. Murray. Hopefully, that will address your questions. Anything, any questions about that? Okay. Audit rep letter is the way it's addressed here. I'm going to take a few moments on this, so bear with me. We received a draft set of financial statements Tuesday?
Friday.
Friday of last week.
It was Friday, yeah.
Yeah. It was nice to have them. I'll tell you, I spent a fair amount of time going over them and have done some analysis of them, and we had a series of questions and discussions going back and forth between myself and the auditors and Jennifer, and that's been going on for the last three or four days. They've issued a new draft, which I looked at and it reflected some of the comments that we had given them. There is still another question outstanding that we've put to the auditor. Jennifer is going to arrange a meeting with the auditor and myself. This is the audit manager, Kathy something?
Kathy, mhm.
Kathy, who's the audit manager and did the work. I'm going to sit with her, and apparently each year, and this is pretty routine in the industry, the auditor will sit down with the principal responsible for the audit. And in that case, because I'm the chairman, I have that responsibility. So I will meet with Kathy. It'll be an opportunity for her to tell me whatever she wants to tell me. It will be done in private, so she can say whatever she wants to say. And I will try to get a response to my question. I can't tell you right now what the financial results are for the town because of this one issue that's outstanding. Depending on how it gets resolved, the town's bottom line could be bigger or smaller. I really don't know. So I don't want to put anything out there yet. But as soon as I get that resolved, we've done all we can. We've reviewed it, we've asked all our questions. Once this question is resolved, we're, we'll accept the statements, and we should get the statements from the auditor, hopefully next week. That's my sense of things. So we will be in a position to take and send that audit off to the Department of Education because we haven't, we have a, an extension through the 15th of April. So we'll, I think we'll make that date without a problem. Once the statements are done, perhaps at the next meeting, I will make a presentation on the year-end results. And, um, the statements will be posted on the website. People can look at them and decide, and come with all the questions you want. I'll do my best answer I can on the fly. If I can't, we'll get back to you. But I think there are some, there's some information that I think we can share with everyone that I think will perhaps enhance the way in which people understand what the results were for the prior year and what our financial position is in the town. So hopefully, next Wednesday, we'll do that, if all that comes to be. Does that sound right, Jennifer?
It does, yeah.
Okay. So what we have to do tonight is vote to, or sign, what's called a rep letter. This is standard in the industry. Every time before the auditors will issue their audit, they want management, in this case, the selectman and the treasurer, to sign a letter that states all the things that we take responsibility for and confirms that we've told them everything we should tell them for them to do a product, proper audit and to certify the statements. So it's, it's a five-page letter, really pretty boring, but it's, it's important. And I've looked at it. I'm comfortable with everything in it. It's virtually the same as the one we've assigned. And so we're going to, do we need a vote for this, Jennifer?
Yes, please.
Okay. So we need a vote to accept the rep letter as, as presented.
So I'll make a motion that we accept the rep letter as presented.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay. Any questions before we move off the subject? Okay. We'll sign this now and then we'll move on. I can talk while we're signing this. We have an executive session that we'll get to after public comment. We probably should have that at the end in this agenda. We're going to be talking about a personnel matter. And we may come out of that meeting with, with an item that we want to vote on. We may, we may not. I don't know how that discussion's going to go, so we may just come out and close the meeting down. If we get through it and we're all in sort of agreement in the executive session, we'll come out, we'll present whatever it is we're ready to act on, and we'll take a vote on that. So usually, I say, it's not worth staying around for. If you guys want to stay around, you're welcome to, or you can go home and watch it on TV.
You want to do the public comment, just in case?
Yeah, we'll do the public comment now. So anyone has a public comment, they're welcome to come to the podium.
I'd like to make a comment of the discussion we had last week. Tom, you had made the implication of the investments being backed by the US government.
Yeah.
As if the US government had never done anything wrong.
Oh, I didn't say that.
No, right, but I mean, the implication was that.
I didn't say that.
But, uh, after thinking about it, you know, I, I sat back and I thought about one of the biggest errors that I believe the federal government did, and that was with what was known as social security, which in today's day and time is now being called social insecurity. Okay? They took the people's money and they put it into the general fund.
Yeah.
Okay. The relationship that I, I make in this aspect is on the investments. And you know my suggestion, everybody heard my suggestion on TV. I just, I just still think that I came up with a pretty fair suggestion as far as returning some of that money to the public, or to the taxpayer, I'm sorry, and investing so that the town has both aspects of it. And I just wanted to make that comment.
Okay, Ray, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay. Do we have a reading of the announcements? Oh, wait a minute, we have a, no, is this pending item? Oh, just a reminder, gentlemen, the, the state is looking for a submission of information for these salt and sand bids.
I saw the email.
Okay, so you're all set?
So you got it ready?
Well, we just want to make sure that-
I just have to respond to it.
I'm sorry?
I just have to respond to it.
Okay, thank you.
Last year, we just wanted to make sure.
We just want to make sure it gets done, guys, that's all. Thank you.
I, I watched the meeting from last week.
Okay, thank you. All right, announcements.
All right, I'll do the announcements. April 6th, we have a planning board meeting at 6:00 PM. We have a public hearing tomorrow night for the 2023-24 school budget at 6:00 PM, which is at the Acton Elementary School. April 10th, we get a capital improvement committee at 5:00 PM. On the 10th, again, there's a warrant and finance at 6:00 PM. On the 12th, we have a select board meeting at 6:00 PM. April 13th, planning board meeting, public hearing, proposed June zoning changes, and that's at 6:00 PM. April 15th, we get a rec committee at 8:30. 17th, cemetery committee, 6:00 PM. 19th, we have a special town meeting, 6:00 PM at the town hall. 20th, planning board, 6:00 PM. April 24th, warrant and finance, 6:00 PM. And on the 26th, we have a select board meeting at 6:00 PM.
Okay. Do we have a motion to move into executive session?
I'll make a motion, we move into executive session 405-6A1-Personnel.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Did you say, well, you're welcome to hang around when we come back, but there may be an action? Great, thank you. I guess I need a motion to come back into general session?
I make a motion, sorry, to come out of executive session 405-6A1-Personnel.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay. This subject is one that actually we, the board has talked about a couple of times in our executive session, and it was an issue that was brought up by the board. We have decided to amend the town administrator's job description. And it should be noted that this was an initiative by the board based on our experience of, um, the effectiveness of the management of town government and trying to find a better approach for how we can create a more streamlined and better level of communication between our department heads and, and the select board. We, I'm going to read to you the first paragraph of this job description, which I think deals with the majority of, of the change. And this will be posted sometime this week, so the public will be aware of it. Uh, this, this is the town administrator. Nature of work: This position is responsible for professional administrative work in assisting the select board to manage the affairs of the town of Acton in keeping with the town's ordinances and the laws of the state of Maine and of the United States. The individual in this position is hired by and directly responsible to the select board and shall perform duties directed by the board. Work involves responsibilities for personnel policies and regulations, maintaining liaison with department heads, elected officials, general public, business, civic groups, state and federal agencies, developing administrative procedures, and ensuring adherence. This individual is also responsible with the maintenance of sound, positive public relations between the town and its citizens, other governments, um, agencies, and various boards and committees of the town. The individual is responsible, the individual in this position performs other such duties as may be directed by the board. Essential duties of the position: oversees all department heads, including the CEO, treasurer, transfer station superintendent, town clerk, tax collector, recreational director, fire chief, APAT director, under the direction of the select board. Serves as the supervisor to our hourly staff in the absence of the department heads. Basically, what this says is, department heads will now report to Jennifer. This is not an unusual practice. Matter of fact, it's quite common in other towns. We just have to go to Shapley to see how it's done. Personally, I, I would find it very difficult to be a department head in this town and feel that I have three managers, soon to be five. That's a, that's a very difficult position for any individual to be in. Department heads and all staff deserve to know who their manager is and who they should take direction from, and who they can go to when they have an issue. And if it's three people, it's, it's fraught with problems. That's all I can say, for both the individual and for the manager. So I think this is a great action. Our, our fellow board members here do as well. And you'll notice that the road agent was not referenced. Is that your question, Will?
Well, I just wondered, so we're getting rid of liaisons, right?
No, no, we still got liaisons.
Hold on, let me just finish up, and let's let the board talk, and then we can open up for comments, okay? Have I covered everything, Jennifer? Yes, okay. So I think this is a wonderful thing to do for the town. I think it's a great thing to do for our department heads and our employees. And also, I think it reflects the, the, the role and the function that Jennifer has played as department, as the town administrator. She has effectively been asked to do this without the authority, and that, again, is a difficult position to put her in. So this is simply clarifying for her and all the other employees in the town what the reporting, what the organizational structure looks like and who they should report to, and who they're responsible to take direction from. Those are just basic management principles that I think everybody should, you know, clearly understand. And I will tell you, coming into this role, I found very confusing. And, you know, it, it's been a challenge for me personally. Any comment?
I feel the same way. As far as when I first started here, I was only here a few months, and it was time for me to do evaluations on, on different departments that I didn't feel I was qualified to be doing. I really, you know, when you first come in, we haven't been here long enough. I mean, Jennifer is here, day in and day out with these people. That would be something that she would do, you know? And I just, and there's other things, like HR stuff, you know, training, things like that, that really, you know, this all plays into this. And, you know, she would be responsible for, so people have, you know, their, their yearly training and, or if there are issues, you know, there's a, there's a set of, you know, X, Y, and Z that you have to follow. When there's three of us, one of us might say, "Ah, never mind, don't do that." Another one of us might, like, want to stomp down on them. It, it's just, it's hard. to stomp down on them. It's just, it's hard, you know? And so to just have one person to go to, I just think it'll work out much better. And, you know, we want to be here also to help Jennifer, you know, when she voices what she wants, that it gets followed through. So...
Well, at the end of the day, she's been doing it anyways.
Well, I know, I know, but I mean...
I mean, it's still, at the end of the day, the selectmen still have the final say.
Right.
Not a lot of that's going to change anyways. Will's questionnaire, liaison, we're still going to have liaisons. I don't know if that's a good or bad thing for you. You were pretty excited, like, liaison, they're gone.
Yeah.
But what do you call it? But, you know, we still need the liaisons for, you know, we still got budget in, we still have to interact with the departments anyways. So, but at the end of the day, what, you need that one individual instead of jumping from one person to another, because we've had instances where people have done that, you know? If they don't like what they hear from one guy, they call another one.
They shop their question. You know, they shop it around.
It's happened a couple times, and it's not cool, but Jennifer usually gets the calls anyways. If it's something she can't handle, she knows that she's got her board, you know, behind her anyway. So I support this.
I do, too.
Great. So we'll work on defining a little shop of the role of the liaison. From my perspective, the one thing I want to make clear is that when it comes to the day-to-day operations of the departments, department heads should be dealing with Jennifer. The liaison should certainly maintain a relationship with their department head, and be aware of what's going on, and try to provide assistance where they can, advice, assistance, but when it comes to day-to-day decision-making about managerial issues, you know, performance issues, they'll really be dealing with Jennifer. So if we're all made our comments, I'll open it up to public comment. Ray, you look like you're going to get up.
Oh, my question was answered by Dave.
Wonderful, good. All right, thank you.
I thought you had to drag the podium up for you because you looked like you were lost.
Yeah, I thought you were. Okay, so can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we adjourn.
No, I think we need to approve it.
Oh, 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 sorry. I'm looking at it going draft. Sorry, sorry.
Make a motion to approve the position, as, position description.
Make a motion to approve the new town administrator's position.
Second that.
All in favor? Congratulations, Jennifer.
Yes.
Thank you for the work that you do. Sincerely, I mean that. All right. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion we adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Thanks for hanging around, folks.